On B C A. With us tonight, I believe the council member Frye will be attending remotely. Dave, can you confirm? Yes, she's on. Thank you. And with that, turn to the mayor for the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
All right, all right. Good evening, President Younger, members of the council. We can get right to our slides. All right, so today, this is not an insignificant day at Kitsap Lake and for our region, since Kitsap Lake is one of our great natural assets that serves a lot of people, just besides our own city residents. It was phosphorus treatment day. And what that means, it's just part of the program that keeps this lake beautiful, healthy and beautiful for our public. And so it was closed today. According to the signage, the the posting times up there, it's still closed. 6:00 P. M. We're scheduled to open. Let's hope we're on schedule. But again, it's going to be ready for the for the public for a wonderful boating season and summer. Just wanted to share that with you. It's ongoing. This is ongoing work to keep the lake clean. All right, next slide. Mayor's Challenge Recipients. So the little history here, when I took office, I did start the Mayor's Challenge. And it was, you know, dedicated to those students who might be a part of the solutions of the 21st century for city, common city problems. Each year, we are amazed, myself and the Navy League, the folks who join us, especially the Navy League, who put in the work to grade, to grade these projects. The two I'm looking at up here, Flood Guard, from grade one through eight category, developed an AI model to analyze flood-prone areas using soil information that is publicly obtained. Just amazing. And it's for to assess flood hazard risks. And it helps with land management. And it was just, again, just neat to see this type of ingenuity come forward. And I wanted to share this year's projects because I thought they were so, you know, really ingenious. And the next one was the nine to 12 category, Democratizing Mental Health Care Through AI-Powered Journal Analysis. This was a program, and you can see the young lady down below, where a person developed a a virtual journal that actually recorded thoughts and inputted it into, of course, it's a brain that that analyzes the thoughts. It's programmed to to understand with input from therapists, professionals, close advisors. And it's close, it's able to gauge the experience and how a person is doing on a particular day. And if you, in the mental health world, if you combine that with all of the other external things going on, it could be the environment, it could be the medications that somebody might be using and or just experiences that are happening. I thought it was really, really a neat way to use technology to kind of self-monitor in that world, in the world that somebody might live in, who is, you know, just managing a mental illness of some type. And so this, it's cutting edge. And again, nine to 12 category. I thought I'd share it with you. This is the kind of programs that are developed here right at the local level. And I, my thanks to all of you, anybody who's participated in the judging in the past. The Navy League is a big sponsor of that also. Next slide. And I want to close by welcoming and introducing our new poet laureate to you, City Council, and to the public. Sarah Steinke. And she's going to come up, I'm just going to have her come up and maybe talk a little bit about herself. She is, she, I mean, really have a robust panel of poets to pick from, Sarah Rose to the top. And so I'm going to have Sarah come up, past poet laureate, Tia Hudson, come up also, and A.J. will be joining them.
I wanted to congratulate Sarah and to give her a token of welcome to the position. We, I think we picked the best candidate, and I'm very excited.
Thank you, Tia. It is my honor to be here. My work, my day job is as a psychotherapist. And so my work really focuses on healing. And I find poetry to be the ultimate healing modality. It connects us to our language, our expression, our bodies. Our imagination connects us to our imagination for each other. So it's, it is my honor to collaborate with, to listen into how our community might be able to use poetry as a, as a point of connection and a point of healing. So, thank you.
All right, I was just, you know, reviewing my, my report tonight. And it turns out, Councilmember Younger, you, Mr. Goodnow, Jennifer Chamberlain, counselor, you were around for, I think, the start or or a major role in these initiatives. These are initiatives I started when I took office. The Mayor's Challenge, cleaning up Kitsap Lake, starting the poet laureate program. Nobody does it alone. And it took all of us to get us here. The only thing I did was get us started. So it's been a, been a pleasure. I'm glad to get to share that with you tonight.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Now I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A Claims and Check Register. Approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers four one zero nine five five through four one one zero seven eight and E F T. Numbers V four three five two nine through V four three six two nine in the grand total amount of $2,819,116.13. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending April 30th, 2025 in the amount of $1,106,261.43. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending April 30th, 2025 in the amount of $30,764.96. B, minutes of council meeting, May 7th, 2025. C, minutes of study session, May 14th, 2025. D, confirm reappointment of Angelica Neary to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. E, approval to eliminate a code enforcement specialist position and to add a code enforcement officer position to the authorized staffing for the Department of Community Development. F, Resolution Number 3396 to accept Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Agreement with the Department of Ecology to design the West Side Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Project. And G, Resolution Number 3397 to accept Clean Water Revolving State Fund Loan Agreement with the Department of Ecology to design and construct the East Side Treatment Plant UV Replacement Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda, we ask that you come forward, at least state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. With that, does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Dave, can you check online to see if we have a hand raised?
We do not.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Seeing none, we'll go to the council for motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next up is public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue. Well, not on tonight's agenda, which is a consent agenda, since there's no general business. This is not interactive, and the council is here to listen to your concerns and questions, but not provide direct dialogue and answers to your questions. And there's also a reminder, believe it or not, we're now entering election season, even though it's mid-May. Please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Ms. Hoover, did anyone make those arrangements?
There was, there were none.
Okay, thank you. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. The timer system we use, so everyone is treated fairly. With that, I now open up for public recognition. Don't be shy, folks.
My name is Charlie Michelle, and I'm a District Seven resident, former petroleum engineer and a dedicated climate advocate. And I'm speaking today to implore you to put language into the comprehensive plan either this year or next year's update and to create some sort of a zoning ordinance or a moratorium to preclude constructing any further gas stations in Bremerton. So this is about gas stations. So our comp plan emphasizes sustainable development and environmental stewardship, including climate action goals. And Washington State is moving towards cleaner transportation, approving any new future gas stations with directly undermined these policies. Gasoline stations have been described as America's largest carbon spigot, serving as a major source of carbon emissions and local pollution. Every gallon of gasoline burn produces 20 pounds of climate destroying CO2. And transportation is currently the largest source of CO2 emissions nationally, with gasoline and diesel responsible for 21% of U.S. carbon emissions. So local and state leaders are pivoting away from gasoline. California has already ordered an end to new gas car sales by 2035, and states like New Jersey have set summer targets. Here in Washington, legislators have introduced proposals to require all new vehicles to be electric by 2030. Gasoline demand is projected to decline sharply. The number of gas stations in the U.S. has steadily decreased from about 250,000 in the 70s to roughly 130,000 by 2018. If we approve new gas stations going forward, we risk investing in outmoded facilities that could eventually become stranded assets. As gasoline use declines, many gas stations will close, leaving behind abandoned and contaminated gas station sites pockmarking the landscape of our city. So Bremerton could be left with more polluted lots like Premier Rental Site was before remediation and stores like the old Chevron at Sixth and Naval. Experts such as Cultura, Congrats, Beyond Toxics, and Stand Earth now explicitly recommend that local governments halt the construction of new gas stations. Beyond climate concerns, a new gas station poses serious health and safety risks for nearby residents and the public. Gasolines emit a variety of toxic pollutants, the most notorious being benzene, a known carcinogen linked to leukemia, lymphoma, and other cancers. And no amount of benzene exposure is truly safe per the World Health Organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle.
Hello, I'm Carol Michelle. I'd like to add, I'm a Bremerton resident. I'd like to add a little more to what the previous speaker was saying. People living or working near gas stations are at risk. Benzene and other toxic gasoline vapors do not stay confined to the station property. For example, researchers have found that benzene concentrations around gas stations can exceed safe levels up to 100 meters away. Children living next door to a gas station are found to be 7.7 times more likely to develop acute leukemia compared to those living farther away. Aren't new gas stations better, you might ask? Even brand-new gas station systems are prone to leaks and spills. Even state-of-the-art tanks and pipes can leak through faulty seals, cracks, or accidents. A study in California examined 31 recently reported fuel leaks and found they came from various parts of the system, not just the tanks, but piping, dispensers, and unknown sources. Even with modern double-walled tanks and leak detection sensors, gasoline still finds its way into the ground due to human error or equipment failure. A busy Costco gas station has been calculated to drip 2,000 gallons per year of fuel. If it makes it into the ground, just 10 gallons of gasoline is enough to foul 12 million gallons of groundwater. As of 2020, there was a backlog of over 63,000 leaking underground storage sites nationwide that still await cleanup. Prevention is better than what would be never-perfect remediation. Gas stations pollute far more than previously understood and cause cumulative harms that weren't accounted for when many of our laws were written. Please add language to our comprehensive plan or next year's update and create a zoning ordinance or such Bremerton city measure to specifically prohibit further gas station construction as five cities have done in Sonoma County, California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Michelle.
Adrian Wright, District Two, I'd like to speak to last week's study session, particularly when you address directly to our good man, Mr. Jackson, regarding Bremerton development and upgrades. My two cents is the demand is here, particularly when we have massive amounts of greenery going down in the county. There's a lot of area around Bremerton that has a potential for for growth. And I know this is a nuanced conversation that some places particularly like that may not want development like District Six and Rocky Point, nice neighborhoods that probably wants tree-lined avenues. You know, versus nuance like downtown versus Manette, Manette being not wanting more development. But you have a lot of other areas that are growing rapidly, like Ridgeline, and other neighborhoods that are old and have a lot of problems, such as District Two and District Four. I, I know that where I live, I live around a lot of World War II era buildings, apartments, and duplex homes rentals. Some of them have faulty roofs, mold, cockroaches that I've heard, areas of crime, so on, so forth. So I, in listening to some of the conversation, I thought it was, I thought it was a lot of good things going back and forth, but I want to add an extra level. Talk about discussing with a part-time actuary statistics about development. And I was thinking more along the lines of outward marketing. Look, outward research, looking to apartment owners, property management companies, development sites, and what they think about the area and potentials for growth. And kind of my proposals are more along the lines of promoting Bremerton growth, possibly development fairs, creating supply and looking at possible suppliers from around the region and and greater area. From turning old properties in particular into larger, more spacious units where we can house a lot more people, not just lower strategies, but but working class, middle, and upper class all over, just serving everyone. And and creating policies, not just to give people the, you know, a free handout, but also just promoting, hey, we, you know, what about upgrading? What about, you know, bringing in new development, attracting more? So on, so forth. So, yeah, that's where I stand, promoting gross remodels and greater development in our precious city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Akoye Karen Vargas, Mayor Wheeler. We're here to request the support for our Juneteenth, our Freedom Festival, as well as our People's March, that the city would support that effort. We are in our 23rd year of the Juneteenth Freedom Festival here in Kitsap County. Over two years ago, it was mandated a national recognized holiday. But we've not yet received the support that we need from our city council and from our, our city to be able to support that festival. We've always done it from a community standpoint. And this year, we would like some extra support with law enforcement as well as support it, just like the rest of the festivals, just like the Armed Forces Day Festival, just like the Viking Fest for the county. There's a unified effort to support those festivals. And we would like that our cities and our commissioners and our countywide support for this festival, because it's housed here in Bremerton. We would like your support to be able to help us to celebrate that. We know that there's community development down here with the Quincy Jones Square. We want to be a part of that, the African-American community and its history and its heritage be supported, valued, and honored in that when we talk about cultural tourism, how we are included and how we will be a part of the planning as well as part of the decision-making when we talk about cultural tourism happening here in the city of Bremerton, working with our commissioners, with our Chamber of Commerce. And what does that look like when we talk about community development? And what does it look like when we talk about how we will work cross-culturally to involve and celebrate multiple cultures that reside here within our city as well as our county? So I'm asking the city council, is there a way that we can work with the new D E I Director that has been appointed to our city to be able to look at some of these disparities? And what does that mean to work with the communities that reside here, especially in Bremerton and in the county? How we will work collectively, collaboratively, in a unified way when we talk about economic development? What does that look like for diverse communities to be able to have their businesses and opportunities to be able to participate in this type of development? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas.
Jose Camacho, Friends of Smith Cove. I adopt and incorporate as my own the comments about gas stations earlier. I'm also here in support of rock to block. I have accused the city administration and particularly D C D of working hand-in-hand with the city's developer cartel by breaking and subverting law and legal process for them. It is an operative for developers, and in this current comp planning, it has remained true to character. D C D does dirt for developers. Its go-to move is to misrepresent law and facts, even omit and conceal them in order to deliver for the city's realty developer cartel. It has done this in the rigged Evergreen Point Project and Shoreline National Program, and now in comp planning. D C D has intentionally created a landscape by comp planning and regulation meant to nullify environmental and shoreline law in developers' favor while being unfair to opponents of this kind of corruption. If you doubt this, look at what it did with the city attorney's help as to ordinance 5506 and 5508, a murder of due process. As it keeps doing, the city attorney's office continues to violate attorney rules of professional conduct with its unethical guidance, malfeasance, and/or non-feasance. RPC 3.3 and 4.1. They know what that is. Attorneys cannot omit law or feign law does not exist because that law is adverse to its position or misrepresentations. The murder of due process violates the Ghost Management Act, which requires fair permitting. This is overtly unfair. Instead, misrepresenting S B 5290 requirements. D C D slipped in the elimination of due process by misrepresenting law and concealing what its intent was by burying the bad face and misleading verbias like housekeeping. This is how I rigged the S and P in 2021 by misrepresentation to the public, obstructing our informed participation. Then ducking the consequences of misconduct with evasive poise, like stacking the planning commission with members of the realty developer cartel. But D C D not only violated due process and created unfairness for ordinary citizens, it created additional liability under Section 1983 Civil Rights Action on top of what is likely to become an antitrust and or racketeering case. Completely unnecessary, all of it. Just had to be honest. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Jack Reed, and I live in Bremerton. I'd like to give you an update on my review of speeding on Trenton Avenue outside my home. And my home has a driveway that backs directly onto Trenton Avenue in the 1100 block. So just after the turn, East 11th. Since I provided input at the May 7th council meeting, I've spent an additional two and a half hours sitting in my car, recording vehicle speeds captured on my handheld speed radar gun. 52 miles per hour, over twice the speed limit. That was the highest speed I captured in the two and a half hours. I'm sure that's not the highest speed of vehicles passing my home on this residential street. Other high speeds captured in that two and a half hours, 46 miles per hour, 47 miles per hour, and others in the 40s. These are all separate vehicle recordings. I'd say that most of the vehicles making the turn onto Trenton from East 11th during my review of that in that two and a half hours were traveling in the high 20s to mid 30s soon after that turn. Still too high. Trenton is federally designated as a major collector, and from the city's own materials, collector roadways distribute vehicular traffic between local streets and arterials at lower speeds and are intended to be a transition between local streets and arterials. And many of the vehicles traveling downhill to the stop sign at 11th are speeding too, with far too many hardly even slowing at the sign. From my observations, most, but not all of the vehicles traveling at or below the speed limit are either making a turn into a driveway or onto East 13th or stuck behind someone who's trying to make a turn. And how great it is when the speed limit is being respected. Contrary to how this may appear, I get no joy out of tracking speeding, out of tracking vehicle speeds, but I know that data is important if there is to be change. My collecting data with my handheld speed radar gun is clunky. I look forward to Public Works completing a traffic study on Trenton near my home, and I believe this is to happen in June. I hope that as a result, there can be engineered traffic calming measures installed in Trenton. In the meantime, please can there be enforcement? I have not seen any enforcement activity. Thank you for your time listening to me. I will not be leaving you with videos of the speed radar readings this time. Technical difficulties on my part downloading them onto flash drives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed.
Hello, my name is Robin Weldon, and I am District Three in Bremerton. I live in the Evergreen Park neighborhood. I would like to, I'm also part of Friends of Smith Cove and And I would like to adopt and incorporate the first two speakers on gas stations and the, you know, the harmful effects of them and Mr. Camacho, who is also part of, part of Friends of Smith Cove. You know, I, I bought my home here in 1999 for $70,000. And yes, it needed a lot of repair because it was a, at that time, a 100-year-old home. Now it's about 122 years old. It's a very historical home. We had to do a lot of, we had to replace the electricity and the plumbing and try to bring the home back to what it actually looked like. In fact, a few years afterwards, the person who, the daughter of the person who built the home visited, she was in her 80s, and she wanted to see her home for one last time. I spent a lot of time at the permitting office in Bremerton. And back then, it was impartial. It was tough. It followed Washington state law. Sometimes it could be infuriating, but everyone was treated the same. Since it became the DCD, the Department of Community Development under the directorship of Andrea Spencer, it has become a developer favoritism rather than supporting the people in or protecting the people here, being impartial toward the people here. I just, I want to say that over the past few years, we have been, you know, accumulating evidence trail of just corruption and developer favoritism. It's not just regular developer favoritism. People who want to build actual low-income housing to help people of this community. It is Sound West group.
Ms. Weldon, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Abreach, District 5. I'm also here about the builders. We are missing out on a lot of money. Thank God for public records. I've looked up a lot of the apartment complexes. It seems one certain developer is paying absolutely nothing. One property they're paying on $149,000 land value only. We're missing out at least, at least for city schools, at least $30,000 every year. That's the portion that should be for some of these properties. I've done comparables, of course, not comparables because there's none that have gyms, racquetball court, or yoga, or anything like that. But equally is nice, lower rent, they should qualify for the MFTE, but they, but they don't, or they haven't applied. My taxes go up every year. I don't mind paying my taxes. I approve the levies, strong school. I want my grandkids to be smart. I want them to go to a decent school. Approve the fire levies. My house might go down in flames. It's also almost 100 years old. Something's got to give. I keep hearing, you know, it's going to make it so that other apartments are less expensive. It hasn't done that. It hasn't done that. Short and sweet, it's kind of the whole zero tax for certain developers. It's kind of giving a vibe like, let them eat cake. So all of us are paying for them, and I don't like it, and it's got to change. That's it? Oh, I'm a Bremerton kid. I've been here all my life, off and on, so.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hello, everybody. My name's Travis from Bremerton. And I'm here to comment on a wonderful experiment that's going on right now as we speak on Sixth Street, where the, the street has gone from four lanes to two lanes. And that's an experiment that allows us to test a couple hypotheses, right? Tests are great. You say you put one hypothesis forward and you see whether it comes true. Put another one forward and you see whether it's true. On Sixth Street, we have, here's the context. The advocates for safer Sixth Street have been arguing for a long time that what we need to do is slow down the cars, reduce the lane widths so that we can have space for the things that make people who aren't in cars safe. Kids walking to school, the moms pushing strollers, people riding bikes. And the city, the administration for months and months has been arguing that these changes would be disastrous. They will lead to all manner of terrible things. Here's from a meeting two months ago. If, the question was, if this, if the road is reduced in certain segments from three lanes to two lanes in order to enable more street safety, what would be the repercussions of that? And they said, there'll be an increase in crashes. There'll be an increase in aggressive driving, direct quotes from the city engineer. They'll create enormous traffic backups, including at one point, a backup all the way from the Naval Gate to Sixth Avenue, seven blocks of backup. And it will contribute to road rage, that all from reducing the road in certain segments from three lanes to two. Now, the experiment that's going on right now went from four lanes to two lanes. And what we see and what, you don't have to take my word for it. I encourage you to go out and look. The street has never been safer. Cars are driving slow. No longer is it the case where cars on a street that's designated as 25 miles an hour. No longer is it the case that they're driving 40 down that street. There has not been an increase in crashes. And by all measurements, the, the street is functioning just fine for cars and much, much better for people outside of cars. And all this leads to this point, which is we have an opportunity on Sixth Street to make gigantic changes on a street that runs through school zones, on a street that's in the core of the city, right? And it's in the street that connects downtown to the entire western side of the city. And the administration's going to argue, they have a whole new set of arguments that cannot do the things that make it safe because it just won't work for the cars. It won't work for the, for people moving automobiles. Please go out, the, the statistical peak of traffic is 4:25 PM. Go out there at 4:25 PM and you tell me how the street is performing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm living in District 4. I also want to give my support for suggesting that the city should support Juneteenth. It's actually a really phenomenal festival. If you haven't been there, it was, it was really excellent last year. And I feel like the city, I don't, I don't just feel it. I really observed that the city leverages a lot of clout from having Juneteenth here without providing any monetary support for it. I noticed some people really getting some fantastic photo opportunities at Juneteenth last year and saw them all over the newspaper. And that's on the backs of the labor of folks who plan Juneteenth every year. And it's a really phenomenal festival. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to a good photo op, but I think that if you're going to get a photo op, that there should be more support for the festival. It's just, it's a really fantastic opportunity. And there's some great books there and there was some free food. And I really appreciated it. And then also on Sixth Street, I live near Sixth Street and I used to leave this building actually around 4:30 every day to go home. I now work later because I hated the traffic on Sixth Street walking home. But it, it actually has gotten better on the days that I leave early and early for me, which is around 4:30. And the traffic's actually not so bad. It's even gotten a little bit easier to leave my neighborhood despite all the construction near it. You know, not during the middle of the day when the construction's active, but it, it has gotten easier on the weekends to actually leave because I only have to turn left across one lane of traffic and not multiple lanes of traffic anymore, where people are constantly going way too fast. I actually really enjoy my walk up to Midtown Market now because I can take the most direct route up Six Street to Midtown Market and get a really nice snack late at night. It, it's a much better place to be. On the note of navigating traffic difficulties, I would also like to request that all future parades, especially the Armed Forces Day Parade, post their parade route somewhere or send it to me in the mail because I live in the middle of it. And I woke up to bagpipes on Saturday and I've been working real hard for like three weeks straight now, doing some really difficult work. And it was super not fun to wake up to bagpipes early in the morning. And I really would have liked to have known what time the bagpipes were going to be tuning up to start the parade. I'm not anti-bagpipes. I just don't want to wake up to them. So if we could maybe post the parade route so that I also could know, in addition to the bagpipes, that it would be damn near impossible to leave my neighborhood via 11th Street when I needed to go run some errands on Saturday, the one day I've had to run errands in the last three weeks. I would have liked to have known that it would have taken me forever to leave my neighborhood that is surrounded by Armed Forces Day Parade. I'm not against Armed Forces Day Parade. It seems like it's a fun parade absent the rain.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else for public recognition?
Hello, my name's Earl Burt and I live over by Kitsap Lake. I, I'm going to tell a story. It has nothing to do directly with Bremerton or... So a few months ago, our wonderful President dissed Canada, Canadians. He disrespected them. He bullied them. He said, you ought to be our 51st state. And it, it infuriated me. We are Canadians, our allies, our neighbors and our friends. So what could I do? I got a map. I saw a little town just across the border called White Rock. I called up the White Rock Chamber of Commerce. I talked to a really nice lady there. And I said, tell me the name of a restaurant or restaurants that are family owned, that have been in White Rock for decades. And she did. And she gave me like three names. And I said, I need to know one that's been family owned in that. She gave me Cosmos Greek Restaurant. Said, good enough. Looked it up. Called them up, talked to the daughter, Vicky, and said, Vicky, I'll call you in a couple of days. You make up the list. I called her in two days. She gave me the list. I went up to Auto Center Way to the chef's store and I bought just a pile of food for her restaurant, for her folks' restaurant. And back in April, I drove up there. Kingston, Edmunds, High Five, Blaine, Peace Arch, et cetera. And I delivered the food. And I met two really nice people. Christina and George Zambus. They are immigrants from Greece. They moved to Canada, immigrated to Canada and did their thing, built a restaurant, had a family. And we laughed and talked and they made some pastries for me and did a bunch of stuff. And I did that because our president is a jerk and I violated all the, all the, what do you call it? The tariff rules and all that other crap. And I bypassed and I went up and I delivered the food to them. They are allies, they are our neighbors, and they are our friends. And how does it affect Bremerton? Well, the Canadians kind of boycotted American stuff and they boycotted coming down here to visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone else for public recognition? No? Saying none, I'll close public recognition. We have no general business tonight, folks. So now we'll turn to council reports. Since this is the last council meeting tonight, we'll start with Council District 6 member, Hannah Mochler. Go ahead, please.
Microphone. Okay. District 6 Council Report, next slide, please. So my next town hall is on June 9th and we have the honor to hear from Jason Driver, Director of Kitsap Regional Libraries, about plans for moving forward. And as always, it'll be, how can I be of use? Here's what council's been doing. Here's what we're gonna do. Next slide, please. These two slides are basic skills courses that are offered by Goodwill. My, one of my constituents works for them and I promised him I'd always put them up. Here they are. Here's the next one, please. Next slide, please. Okay. There, there should, oh, okay, my bad. So it's basic job skills, ESL. It's, it's a pretty decent program, gotta say. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. So a couple of months ago, we, I brought up once more that I want like great big signs that say notice of proposed land use action so that everyone can see them. And once again, that was deemed not possible. So what we, what DCD decided to do was a compromise and got the planning commission to accept it, yay, DCD, of putting up a sign, just giving notification, right? So this is the buffer of the Red Creek Wetlands and we are driving along Sinclair Way here. You can see the real estate sign. Okay, next slide, please. Now we are directly opposite a public notice of land use action. This is Lulu the dog. It is not the most conspicuous thing. Next slide, please. So this is, I am standing with my feet in, in the, among the flowers and I still can't read it. So this is what it looks like on the ground. This is meeting the requirements for a proposed development immediately next to a, about a beaver-otter wetland with a value of eight assigned by Department of Ecology out of 10. Not bad. With a mandated 150-foot buffer. So this is the notification to the community of the hearing at which only one member of the public appeared. All right, so in my, you know, in my opinion, this isn't an effective announcement, letting the community know what's going on. But this is my opinion only. Next slide, please. Is there a next slide? Nope. Okay. That was pretty much it. I, I wanted to announce something I forgot at my last council report, which is that there is a conditional use permit application for a gas station on Kitsap Way to put two 10,000 gallon, two 10,000 gallon vaults of, of fuel oil directly above Oyster Bay. And the comment period for that closes on May 23rd. Other than that, I hope you guys have been enjoying a beautiful spring and I'm going to astound my fellow councilors by at this time saying thank you and good night.
Hey, thank you. Councilor, good now. I didn't expect you to finish so soon, so I'm not really, didn't really prepare much. Sorry. Actually, I have no report tonight, so I'll turn over my time as well. No worries. Councilmember Revolasky.
Yep, microphone's on. First, I, I want to say I had a different reaction to the parade because I live right near the high school and they finally started practicing. And they finally started practicing on my street again. So Saturday before the parade, not until about eight thirty-nine o'clock, I got to watch the band march by. Anyway, um, can I have my first slide, please? Not that one. That one. Okay. Naval Avenue Elementary School in conjunction with Sea Film is doing this wonderful fundraiser. Where for ten dollars, you can get, for a child can go see ten movies this summer. And what I did is, there's nobody in my household who's interested in Paddington or Sonic. So I just bought some of these passes. And what the PTA is going to do is give out these extra passes to kids who are in the backpack brigade, which is where they'll send home food on the weekends with kids that might have food insecurity in their homes. So please consider buying one of these tickets or more than one of these tickets. They're only ten dollars apiece. And Sea Film actually donated all of these to Naval Avenue Elementary School. So a big shout out to Sea Film, too. Maybe in the future, some of our other movie theaters could do the same. Okay, could I have my next slide, please? So this is about the multifamily tax exemption, which I'm not sure very many people in the city know about. And what this tax exemption does, the intention is to get developers to either come in and build new multifamily units or rehab an existing multifamily unit. If they give what is titled affordable units, they only twenty percent have to be affordable. They get a twelve-year tax exemption. If they don't give any affordable units, then it's for eight years. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, the affordability is based on countywide incomes, which the average income in the county is right around a hundred thousand. And in the city of Bremerton, I believe it's like seventy-two thousand is the average. But the affordability criteria is based on the county, not the city. So myself and at least a few other council members would like to, to modify that. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, too, a developer can get an eight-year exemption from all their taxes. And then ask for another twelve years because now they're going to give some of those to what is now considered affordable, but it's not, it's not affordable to most people in Bremerton. The intention was that these were supposed to be helpful to middle-income families. And that's why it was set at eighty percent of the average median income. But the thing is, is we still don't have any housing for like a two-person household where they're both working a minimum wage job. That they still probably wouldn't qualify for the affordable units. The average, we got some demographic information on two of the properties that currently, one of them now has a twenty-year tax exemption. And the average household income in their units is over a hundred thousand dollars. I don't, I don't believe most of the counselors knew when this was passed that somebody could get an extension of that type. And also, I don't think most of the counselors were aware that this tax burden is now shifted to the rest of us. So this year, the tax exemptions for multifamily exempted properties was over two point three million dollars. So that two point three million dollars still gets collected, but it gets collected by all the taxpayers in the county. So it's a pretty, it's kind of harsh deal like that I live in a six hundred square foot house with two other family members and a house that's over a hundred years old. And I pay more taxes than the entire large apartment buildings overlooking the Minette Bridge. So I, I really urge the community to read up more on the multifamily tax exemption. And send us your suggestions on how you think it should be changed, if you want it changed. Because the developers are all going to send us suggestions, most likely to not change it. So I want to make sure the community knows that you have the opportunity to give us your input on how you would like to see any modifications done to this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Coughlin.
Well, thank you. Just a quick response to public comments. Really appreciate the, the comments on the gas station. Excuse me, moratorium. You know, I do think about it. We've had several stations already in town that have been vacant for fifteen, twenty years at this point. And they are expensive for people to buy and clean up because of the environmental impact. So that forward thinking, I really appreciate. And I know Miss, Miss Vargas left, but I'll, I'll send her an email and give her a call. I hope she's getting support from, from staff for that festival. Normally that is the case every year. So if that's not happening for administration, I'd like to take a look into that. And then finally, for threatened speeding, I think Jack had it out. But we did get a really nice draft at Public Works Committee yesterday of the traffic calming policy update that we, we've asked for, for a long time. And it really did have a nice potpourri of options in there. And they're looking at quick build situations where they can put in bump outs and S turns and, and lane narrowing to really reduce speeding. So that was great. Really, really nice work by our Public Works staff on getting that draft coming. That should be coming to council ASAP, which is great. Perfect. And then my slides, I kind of got a public safety focus tonight. Start with my first one here. I just wanted to give a, a kudos to our, our Bremerton Police Department. This is two press releases. One just came out the other day. The other one's from February. But some really, really great police and detective work on, on tracking down just large quantities of not only the firearms you see there, but really the fentanyl and meth and just, just drugs that destroy lives. And have really contributed to, to rising crime rate and, and people's lives being ruined. So I don't always see our, our BPD getting a lot of public kudos, so I want to give them some public kudos on, on really some great police work here and getting these off the street. And then the rest of my slides are, are a bit more fun. I was honored to join myself and Senator Deborah Christian Adassen, who's from the twenty-sixth state Senator Legislature. We went to Boise, Idaho for some, not really training, it's called Fire Ops One Oh One. It's a program where fire departments from across the Northwest bring out elected officials to put them through a day of firefighter training to basically spend a day in the shoes. And I just got a couple of slides here. It was, it was grueling, but fun, but mostly educational. Just wanted to relay a few things back to fellow council members here. So we, we, we talked a lot about what they do, what their day looks like, the impact of proper staffing and funding and equipment. And then next slide. We did search and rescue in building with full masks and tanks. You know, with, with, with black smoke where you can't see, it's hard to hear. There's, there's furniture debris. You don't know the layout of the building. We're rescuing a two hundred pound, you know, dummy. And you really got to rely on your team member to, to help you find the way out. And it really highlighted, they go into these houses and situations and you don't know. You know, a lot of these, a lot of the places they go into are not spick and span and pretty. The one in my house with a four-year-old right now, there'd be a lot of stuff in the way. So it's, uh, it was, it was extremely difficult and yet it was just a training, a training situation where we knew no one's life was on the line. So very impactful. And the next slide, we did the EMS training that they go through. So started out doing CPR in a test dummy that was just showing the value of having some kind of modern technology. This dummy was advanced enough, it could really track how well you're doing CPR. Gives great feedback. It's helping train our EMTs and paramedics. And then we loaded it, loaded in the ambulance and they drove us around and they simulated what it's like driving over nice roads and sharp roads. And we got to a, a pretty bumpy patch where we're being jostled about. And I'm doing CPR on the dummy and someone's holding me and I'm, I'm trying to just keep my balance and keep the CPR going. And one of our firefighters looks at me and goes, hey, Jeff. And I'm like, yeah, what's up? There's a, there's a public, like, what's, what's wrong? And he goes, this is what Kitsap Way feels like at the moment. So I'm like, okay, duly noted, paving Kitsap Way. Let's make sure that's high priority, one of the routes. And then next slide. We learned, we did a lot of other, everything from, from jaws of life on the left there, extracting, you know, a dummy from a car, extricate a car part to battering down a door and prying it open and getting past a lock to cutting holes in the roof. And so working with chainsaws on a roof. And then I'm not a fan of heights, so my, my last slide here, or second to last, is then climbing this four-story, four-story ladder, which is my biggest challenge, but in full gear and, and, and tanks. And so just the last slide, you know, what was, what was really informative was not just learning, you know, not just saying that they have a tough job. We know they all have a tough job, but it's really beyond the physical rigor. It's the, the technical skill, how they are able to so quickly get a door open, do search and rescue, communicate. It is, is just a highly technical field and when they have seconds to react and train. So a big kudos to, to Craig Patty and Benny Camerata, two of our local Bremerton firefighters for taking Senator Deb and I out. Just really, really eye-opening. And then my last slide for my report is a reminder how, that we have Memorial Day Monday. Thank you to, to all who've served and those who gave their lives for our country. And I know there's multiple celebrations, but I'll highlight one of the big ones is the Turner Joy at ten o'clock. If you can make it, it's always a, a really impactful ceremony. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. I don't really have a report today other than to say I was able to judge the bands in the parade at the Armed Forces Festival. And it was a, a great opportunity to watch the parade this year and sit near the VIPs and hear their response to our parade. It was a great day. All of Bremerton showed up despite the rain. So really want to thank everybody for showing up as you have tonight as well for public comment. I also want to make sure, piggybacking on Councilmember Revolowski's report, we have a study session next week that's always open to the public to watch via Zoom. And one of the issues that we'll be learning more about will be the MFT program. So I really encourage the community as well as reading up on it to attend that study session via Zoom and learn even more. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And, and just for correction, Councilmember Fry, you weren't aware, but I had to move that to the following study session because we have eleven items on the study session for next week plus additional seven under General Counsel Business. So you weren't aware of that. So it'll be not next study session, but the study session afterwards. And Councilmember Revolowski will be providing the presentation.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Councilmember Chamberlain, go ahead.
Sure. I think I have like one or a couple, I have a couple of slides. There are a couple of pictures that didn't make it in last week for our Stephenson Canyon Stewardship Group. This is Naomi's lovely husband right here, getting to the root of the issue. Literally, we did excavation of Japanese root, Japanese root. Not weed, thank you. And we were calling them mandrakes. To be honest, that's why I forgot the name. And doing impressions of what they would sound like if they were mandrakes. It was actually a lot of fun. And the next slide is us feeling super proud. This is what was left of the team at the end of the day. And we did not have a before picture because we were just, we just got to work, but we're going to do it again. Next slide is just our advertisement for the stewardship group. It's going to be the fourth Sunday through summertime, so May twenty-fifth, from three thirty to five. We're going to meet at the Birch Street Greenhouses. And speaking of which, I saw recently, and I think that's all my slides. We can leave that up for just a moment though, if that's okay. I saw recently a couple of trucks or one truck coming up from Sheridan, right up from the, the greenhouses with these billowing, bushy full baskets of flowers headed out to the city. And I thought, how wonderful that they've, it's spring, spring has sprung. And I don't know if you've noticed it, we made it through the winter. And so when you see those, those baskets around town, just know they come from a greenhouse and they started off as just an empty pot. And they grew to fill two greenhouses and now they're out in the city beautifying our, our town. I think that's it. I'd love to see y'all out for the stewardship group. I don't know exactly what's on the agenda, but I'll connect with Parks Director. And a couple of things. I completely understand the feeling of waking up and not knowing, waking up to music. I used to live on Eighth Street back in the day. This is Stones Throw from Seven-Eleven. It's underneath where the parking lot is for the Marvin Williams Building now. But the marching bands used to meet up on that street and practice there. Not practice the way they do over in your neighborhood, because later on in life, I became a band mom and we would meet up and, and I would watch the kids walk around and practice for bands. So, but I do understand it can be a little frustrating to wake up to that. And I had a, a future bando who would, who was sleeping in the house and was always woken up early by the band's kids who showed up to, to do Armed Forces Day Parade. And so I, I don't know if we have an avenue that, where we post the route ahead of time or where they meet, but it should be available. And I think it is, is a great idea to do outreach to the neighbors to let them know. I wanted to take a minute. This is something, okay, it's something a little uncomfortable I don't normally do. I'm going to kind of brag a little bit. Because I was really excited to see our new poet laureate and our first poet laureate come. And it was like a ceremonial passing of the baton. And so it was really nice to see. And the mayor mentioned initiatives that he brought forward, but there's a little history behind that. So I actually had been involved in ours poetica. I was, I was on the Arts Commission appointed by Mayor Lind in her term. And I'd been really enjoying ours poetica as a poet and as an artist on both sides of it. And I thought, wow, wouldn't it be great if we had a poet laureate program in Bremerton? And I brought it to the Arts Commission. They loved it. So I did a lot of research. I found policies, you know, and, or different programs, different cities and created a proposal for our Arts Commission, brought it to the mayor. And Sunny at the time was really, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wheeler, the mayor's wife, was really, she's really involved in the arts. And, and she's an artistic person. She loved the idea of poet laureate program. And so we did, after, you know, we spent some time with the Arts Commission, spent some time with the mayor and his wife. And, and then sent Inglegal, who's now on the Arts Commission, but she was the Parks Liaison. She was super big in the, in crafting and, and letting me be a person that, or being my person that I could field these ideas with. And it was pretty fast and furious, furious. We proposed the idea, got it put together in January of twenty nineteen. In March, there was a call for artists. Actually, it was in February, there was a call for artists. Anna and I actually both applied and it was a blind reading. I think I came in third. And Anna was up there too in the, in the finalists. So that's the little connection we have for poet laureate program. And then in April twenty nineteen was when the mayor brought it forward to become a program in the city of Bremerton. So thank you to Tia Hudson and congratulations to Sarah Steinke. Welcome. That's really all I have. Thank you and have a great day.
Okay, thank you. It never ceases to amaze me. I look at the council agenda and this one, I looked like, oh my goodness, half hour at max. And we're over an hour. Because of the public recognition, and I believe I speak for this entire council, we don't mind. We want you here. We'd like more people here. Even if it's bad news or yelling at us or whatever, we want to hear from you. Otherwise, it's kind of lonely. So come on down. And give us your two cents. You get your three minutes. So we do appreciate it. Reminder that the next regular study session will be on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, beginning at five PM. Sixth floor council conference room with a remote option available by Zoom. And folks, that concludes tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned.